Good evening. Please allow me to call to order Ferndale City Council meeting of Monday, December the fourteenth, two thousand and nine. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, instituted in a republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Council members Baker, Galloway, Gumbelton, Lennon, and Mayor Covey.
Here as well. Thank you, all accounted for. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Approval of the agenda, and I contacted you over the weekend regarding requests for transfer of ownership of a Class C liquor license from Buffalo Wild Wings to a new holding company. Can we add that to the agenda as a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Public hearing after presentations?
Correct.
And with that change, is there a motion to adopt the -- to approve the agenda with that addition?
So move.
Support.
Motion made and seconded, Galloway and Baker. Madam Clerk.
Council members Baker, Galloway, Gumbelton, Lennon, and Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. Next item, Madam Clerk.
We have presentations. The first one is the fiscal year two thousand and nine financial audit statements.
Thank you kindly. Mr. Brunner, do you want to introduce first, or Jane Marie, our Finance Director?
Jane Marie, please.
Ms. Eubanks, you're up.
We actually have a representative of Abraham Gaffney here tonight. I'll just hand up. Erin Stevens. As you'll recall, we did bid out the auditing services for two thousand and nine. This -- so this is the first year with Abraham Gaffney. We were very pleased with how the audit progressed this year and the professionalism of the audit team, and Erin's here to go over some highlights from the audit.
Thank you. You should have had in your packets the actual audit document that was bound and then also outlined with charts and graphs. A couple of general comments before I get to the financial statements themselves. I would like to thank Jane Marie, as well as Tom Darling and the rest of the city staff. It was a pleasure to work here with the city on this engagement, and we appreciate the courtesy, cooperation, and assistance that we received while we were here. What I do plan to do is just highlight what I consider to be the key areas of the financial statements as prepared by the city and our reports on those financial statements. But if you have questions, feel free to stop me at any time, and we can go through those. On page one of the financial statement document is the independent auditor's report, and the purpose of an audit is to provide an opinion as to whether your financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. The purpose of an audit is not to detect fraud or give you an opinion on internal controls. Fraud detection, deterrence, and prevention, as well as sound internal controls are management's responsibility. The independent auditor's report on page one does include our opinions on your financial statements. You had eight opinion units for this fiscal year. Your general fund is always a major fund. Your other funds may or may not be major, depending on the relative balances of assets, liabilities, revenues, and expenditures. All of your opinion units did receive unqualified or clean opinions, which means that everything has been prepared and presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. I would like to focus on the fund-level financial statements. So if you turn to page nineteen, we have the governmental funds balance sheet, which is a snapshot as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nine, of your assets, liabilities, and fund balances for your governmental funds. I like to focus on the general fund as the operating fund for the city, and specifically like to look at the unreserved and undesigned portion of fund balance. So in the left-hand column, the third number from the bottom, four million, six hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, is the unreserved and undesigned portion of general fund fund balance. That represents approximately twenty-three and a half percent of your expenditures and other financing uses for the fiscal year. As a general rule of thumb, we recommend a minimum of fifteen to twenty percent. I would not consider twenty-three and a half to be excessive by any means. In fact, I think you're in a better position to face uncertain economic conditions in the coming years with the decline in property values and the reductions in state share revenue, and investment return has been down for a few years already. So at twenty-three and a half percent, I think it is a sound fund balance, sound financial condition as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nine. On page twenty-one, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances, again focusing on the general fund. Total revenues for the year, about a third of the way down the page in the left-hand column, eighteen million, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That was an increase over the two thousand and eight fiscal year, but only about one percent. Total expenditures, probably two-thirds of the way down the page, seventeen million, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. That was an increase of about five and a half percent over the previous fiscal year. The results for the year is actually the third number from the bottom, a use of fund balance of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. To give you a visual perspective of the general fund activity, if you turn to the first bar graph, which is a five-year analysis of your general fund revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. As you can see, you added to fund balance in the first four years where revenues had exceeded expenditures, and the yellow bar has been increasing for four years. You did use some fund balances, except two hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, two thousand and nine. But over the course of the five years, you've had stable fund balance and are in sound financial condition. The next page in the outline, we have a couple of pie charts that detail the composition of your general fund revenues and expenditures. The revenues on the top pie chart, property taxes represent fifty-one percent of your total revenue for the two thousand and nine fiscal year, followed by intergovernmental revenue at twenty-two percent, and that would include federal, state, and local revenue. The expenditures on the bottom, public safety, the use of funds at sixty percent of the general fund budget, which would include police, fire, building inspection, and animal control, followed by general government, which would be the council, district court, manager, finance clerk, treasurer, et cetera. That was sixteen percent of your general fund budget. Next, just briefly, if you turn to -- back to the report, we did conduct an audit in accordance with O M B circular A one thirty-three, and on page ninety-one, we had a report on compliance with requirements applicable to each of your major federal programs. And this was required because the city expended more than five hundred thousand dollars in federal awards. In the third paragraph of this report, we give our opinion on the compliance, and we say, "In our opinion, the city Ferndale complied in all material respects with the requirements referred to above." So that's what you want to see, is an unqualified opinion on your major federal programs. Page ninety-three, as I said, you expended more than five hundred thousand. You actually expended one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand in federal awards. On page ninety-five, we have our report on internal control over financial reporting. We had one finding that noted some noncompliance with the Budgeting Act. So on page ninety-seven, the schedule of findings and question costs. We summarize our results at the top, where we say we have an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. We noted no significant deficiencies and material weaknesses in your internal control. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies with respect to the major federal programs. But we did have the unfavorable budget variances at the bottom under section two. This is probably one of the most common findings that we have with our clients, and that is the budget variance issue, meaning that the budget wasn't amended prior to expenditure. And on page ninety-eight, we do have the corrective action response as supplied by management. So we didn't audit the response, but it is there for your consideration. I went through that pretty quickly, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Stevens, just a couple for me, sir, and we appreciate this very professional report and explanation. On page three, it talks about the unreserved, undesigned fund balance of a general fund of four point six million dollars. On page twenty-one, at the bottom of the general fund column, it says fund balance five point five million. And so what is the difference between the two numbers, and which one is the actual fund balance?
If you actually -- if you turn back to page nineteen, your total fund balance is the five million. It's the second number from the bottom, five million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand. But then portions of that total have been designated or reserved for specific purposes. And so you see the unreserved and undesigned portion is the four point six million, which is the third number from the bottom.
And one other question that I'll let others ask, back to page twenty-one. Our total revenues for the year were eighteen point nine million under general fund, and our total expenditures were seventeen point nine million, showing a one million dollar surplus.
Yes.
And yet, when the city council adopted its budget last year, we adopted a balanced budget. So how do we understand a million extra dollars showing?
Well, that wasn't the actual results for the year either. You had transfers into the general fund and then transfers out, so you actually used two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. You do have a budget-to-actual statement in here as well, if I can find it. It starts on page sixty-two. So you can see that the right-hand column is the variance for each of the line items. So your actual final amended budget, you budgeted for a use of fund balance of one point five million, and you only used two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So you actually were one point -- almost one point three million dollars better than your budget.
Okay, so even though the city council adopted a balanced budget, we made cuts last year, we ended up with over a million dollars in a surplus?
Well, you had -- it was one point three million dollars better than your budget. You still used two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of your general fund balance.
I understand. Okay. I guess my point is that we probably should do a better job of budgeting so that we're closer to what we really expect as opposed to showing an extra -- it's always good to show an extra million as opposed to losing a million. But it helps us up here make decisions, especially as it's getting into this coming year where we have huge, major cuts. We need accurate budget numbers to make our decisions.
I would call it best to address that. If you look in the revenue portion, the two amounts with a dramatic variance to budget is investment earnings, which we don't know until after the end of the year, so there's really no way to accurately budget. It depends on what our investments are doing at any point in time, and we had one miscellaneous revenue item come in late in the year also, because the variance for that is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Again, there's no real way to amend that budget, you know, prior to -- those are unusual circumstances, not likely to repeat each other. Normally, our variance, if you look at prior years, our revenue and expense are each within one percent of budget. So this was an unusual year with those two items.
This is the year that ended June thirtieth, right?
Right, June thirtieth, two thousand and nine.
Now, wasn't that one of the worst years for investments since the Depression?
It was pretty darn bad.
So we actually did well?
We did better because we had positioned ourselves with a little bit longer investment on our medium-term investments, which stayed at that four to five percent level. So we did do a little bit better, but the thing with that is also the unrecognized gains or losses at the end of the year favored us a little bit better last year.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks and Mr. Stevens. Other council members have questions?
Asked and answered.
Thank you. Councilman Galloway, anything from the auditor? Other council members?
No, well said.
Thank you very much.
Thank you kindly. Is there a need to have a motion to receive this audit statement?
Just one in your packet materials, yes.
Your Honor, I move to receive the financial statements and supplementary information for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and nine.
Support.
Thank you. Councilman Lennon makes the motion. Councilwoman Gumbelton seconds to receive the audit report discussion. Madam Clerk.
Council members Galloway, Gumbelton, Lennon, Baker, Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. Thank you kindly. Madam Clerk, next item.
We have a presentation from the Ferndale Public Schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jessica Stillger, communications specialist for the Ferndale Public Schools. I'd like to start this evening by talking a little bit about school funding. This past Thursday, a small group of Ferndale Schools employees and board members and a parent went to Lansing to talk to our legislators. We were sharing the message of equal and fair funding for all Michigan schools, talking about short and long-term funding solutions, and we were able to hand out flyers about the Ferndale Schools' financial situation and what we would like to see the legislature accomplish in the next year. We are still asking our local families to send messages to their elected officials, and here is the message we would like you to send. If this funding crisis is not addressed in the short and long term, all of the accomplishments that we come up and share to the community, such as fine arts and athletics, are all in jeopardy. They are all being threatened by lack of cooperation and any forward progress as far as the school financial situation in Lansing. So we would like everyone to contact their elected officials, not just locally, but, you know, county and statewide. And if you need more information or contact information, you can visit our website at We are in the process of getting ready for kindergarten in the fall, and we are starting to accept applications and enrollment. If you have any information regarding kindergarten enrollment, you can call our enrollment office at two four eight, five eight six, eight six, eight six. We have some big events coming up in January. The first is our Celebrate the Dream event. It's an annual district-wide and community-wide event to celebrate our diversity. It's January thirteenth at Ferndale High School's auditorium at six thirty P. M. We will be watching a film and having some discussion afterwards. On January twenty-seventh at nine thirty A. M., we are having a community breakfast. We are inviting business members, chamber members, D. D. A., realtors, and anyone in the community who would like to learn more about the district to come, enjoy breakfast, hear from our students and our parents and our administrators. That is in the Ferndale High School Media Center, and we would like you to RSVP if you're interested in coming at two four eight, five eight six, eight six, five one. This year, our extravaganza event is a big district-wide open house, and we have partnered up with the Fine Arts Department, and it is the All-City Extravaganza this year from twelve to four P. M. on Saturday, January thirtieth at Ferndale High School in the Commons and Auditorium. There will be three free concerts throughout the afternoon for anyone in the community to come enjoy, as well as kindergarten registration and information from every school building to learn about the district. The Ferndale High School and Ferndale Middle School staffs have partnered with a local law firm, the Dykema Group. They are offering student and families free legal clinic, and they would like everyone to know about it. They meet at Ferndale High School the first Thursday of every month from four to six P. M., and they are available for family law, domestic violence, immigration, landlord, tenant, guardianship, veterans' benefits, expungement, consumer protection, estate planning, and home contractor problem services. They will spend a half hour meeting with each group, and this is all free services. The only thing they cannot accept are criminal cases or matters that are adverse to the Ferndale Schools. We just like that to be out there. Also, we send out newsletters every Friday, and if anyone is interested in receiving them, they usually look like this, please sign up at -- email fpspanout@ferndalschools.org or visit ferndalschools.org/districtnews. That's it from us.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, we did pass a resolution, did we not? Was it you, Councilman Baker, that brought or asked that a resolution come forward where we asked our state legislators to restore funding to the schools?
I brought it up. I don't believe we've ever addressed it, though.
We didn't get anything?
I don't think so.
Okay. We did -- am I recollecting that correctly?
You are. I guess that would be my fault for not following.
Oh, I don't know that it's your fault, but let's ask the staff if they can prepare for us at the next council meeting, a resolution for the council to adopt, asking Lansing to do its best to restore funding for the schools per pupil. That should help a little. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
A public hearing on the request from Buffalo Wild Wings for a transfer of ownership for their Class C liquor license.
Thank you. And this issue is not to change anything other than ownership of the liquor license at Buffalo Wings, is that correct?
Right, they're transferring all interest from a number of people to one member now called AMC Wings.
Thank you kindly. This public hearing, then, is open, and it is for strictly discussion on that issue, which is a transfer of the Buffalo Wild Wings liquor license. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on the issue? I'm not seeing a mad rush to the podium, so we will close the public hearing and open it up to any discussion or requests for information from council members. Don't see any, and I'm assuming that the police chief has no objection as well?
He signed off on it, yes.
Thank you. I assumed that, saw that. If there's no other request for information, then would there be a motion from the table?
Here I move that we approve the request to transfer the Buffalo Wild local liquor license to the bowling company as stated.
Support.
Councilwoman Baker seconds Councilman Lennon's motion, discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Gumbelton, Lennon, Baker, Galloway, and Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well. The passage unanimously, Madam Clerk, next item.
We have call to audience.
The call to audience is a thirty-minute section of the meeting. It's five till. This is for issues not on the agenda. I will remind folks here tonight, depending on what you'd like to talk about, is that we do have the discussion of parking recommendations and changes coming up on the agenda, so this would not be the time for that. But any other issue, we ask a three-minute limit, please, on your remarks. Ask that you share your name and address verbally or written, and also that you practice decorum, and with all due respect, and not attack the integrity of any individual persons. Mr. Martin, I'm sure you can't do that.
I promise. My name is Dan Martin. I'm at fourteen forty-seven West Hazelhurst, but I'm here today as chair of the Ferndale Community Foundation. I've got two things to talk about today. The first is tickets are now available for the Second Annual Taste of Ferndale, which is a Mardi Gras party on February sixteenth, and they make fabulous holiday gifts. They're available from any member of the board from the community foundation, or within the next week they'll be available online. So I encourage you to take advantage of that. Last year was a lot of fun, and this year, I think, is going to be even better.
How many restaurants, Mr. Martin?
We are still signing them up, but we're currently up to eleven, so.
Eleven?
Yeah. The second thing I'm here for is really, it's getting to the end of the year, and some people may not be aware that while the Ferndale Community Foundation is not a commission of the city necessarily, there are requirements that city council members serve on our Board of Directors, two to be exact. And since it's the end of the year, I would like to extend my thanks to a couple of folks. This council's been represented for the last few years by Mayor Covey and Councilwoman Gumbelton. Mayor Covey's been with this organization since pretty much the beginning. He's brought a lot of passion and energy into the organization. We absolutely appreciate that. Councilwoman Gumbelton, his term is coming to an end, and while I don't expect she will be uninvolved, I am really grateful for the effort and energy that she's put into this in the last couple of years. She was the event chair for the First Taste of Ferndale. She's worked on our development and our governance committee, and, you know, as chair of an organization, it's great to have folks representing us on council with such energy for the foundation, and I am truly grateful for the work that you've done, and both you and the mayor have put into the foundation. So thank you very much. I wanted to do that publicly. And lastly, Mr. Brunner also works with us on the foundation, and again, I thank him for his insight that he brings. And it's always great when you can go to your city manager and say, "Hey, can you sell ten tickets?" So I really appreciate that, too. So thank you.
Thank you. How about a round of applause for everyone who works on the foundation?
Good evening, city council members and viewers. My name is Julie Glazer, and I am one of the volunteers at Ferndale Youth Assistance. On Wednesday, January twentieth, Ferndale Youth Assist is hosting a free Love and Logic seminar for parents of kindergarten through fifth graders. It will be held at the Media Center in Ferndale High School starting at six P. M. If you're interested in attending, please contact Ferndale Youth Assistance at two four eight, five eight six, eight seven, zero, zero. Also, please start preparing for the Blues Festival on January twenty-ninth. We will need volunteers and participation. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Glazer.
Your name is Mayor Covey, State Council. My name is Dennis Seppner, and I live at Seven Sixty, Florida. The Ferndale Students Group is sponsoring our annual Christmas luncheon on Wednesday, December sixteenth. I'm sorry to say, but reservations are already closed on that one. My real purpose here tonight is to thank the business community. Once again, they stepped forward and donated certificates for our door prizes, and those businesses are Rosie O'Grady, Fomo's Italian Restaurant, Western Fruit and Meat Market, the Emery, Sabaline, A. J. Chastain, Buffalo Wild Wings, and Strawberry Moon Bakery. For them, we thank for their generous donations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, citizens all, my name's Ron Gilmore, four fifty-two West Marshall, Ferndale. I'm here on behalf of the members of Ferndale Elks. On May sixteenth, two thousand and nine, we hosted an event that was citywide, Hang In With the Heroes, in which we honored members of Marine Support Group Forty-Seven, as well as all veterans from the city who have served in the military. I am very proud to say that with the funds raised from that event, we were able to send over quite a few boxes of goods that the Marines requested. They were sent over to Iraq. They just arrived this past Saturday. I got an email response from them thanking all of the citizens of Ferndale for their generosity and for their Christmas wishes. That event that we held on May sixteenth was not the end of Hang In With the Heroes. It was merely the beginning. This Christmas, we were able to make their Christmas a little brighter, and we look forward to their welcome-home party. Not sure exactly when that's going to be. I don't have an official word yet, but I will definitely let you know. Thank you.
Ask a question, Ron?
Yes.
I have an elementary school that's been collecting items for the military. Would you be interested in sending any more? Could I give them your --
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Then I'll get in contact with you.
Please do.
Okay, because they're looking for a home. Thanks.
Ms. Heller?
Yes, Ann Heller.
Great news for the city?
Yes, I do. Ann Heller, ten twenty-four. Leroy, Board President for FernCare. Last Thursday, I received a call from Congressman Sandy Levin. We indeed are recipients of a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar appropriation from the federal government. This absolutely means that the clinic will open this spring. It also, I have to say thank you, of course, to Congressman Levin, and then, of course, to Senators Carol Levin and Debbie Stabenow for making sure that it stayed in the bill so that it would pass, and it absolutely did. What this means is that with this money, this assures the interior renovation absolutely, and it also will allow us to expand patient services, the things that we had hoped to do, we will now be able to do a little bit more. And also, I just want to let people know, we have already raised, just through our local fundraising, thirty-five thousand dollars, no mean amount at all. And everyone who has donated to us, everybody who has attended our fundraisers, please be assured that the money that you donated will absolutely go to patient services. We will use this appropriation money for the overhead and further renovations and things, but all the money that you so generously gave us will go directly to patient services. And I am very happy to tell you that, and I expect the next time I come here, it's going to be with an opening date. So thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for your support.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Anne. Well done.
Good evening, council. Mayor, Chris Hughes from the Ferndale DDA, I'm just here to, uh, remind everybody here and at home that this, the holiday season is, uh, still going strong in downtown Ferndale. This Thursday night, we've got Merry Midnight Madness, and our merchants will be openly, it'll be everybody's last chance to enter to win some great prizes. We also wanted to invite the community to come and have some input into our wayfinding, um, program that is going on. From seven to nine P.M., we'll be at one six three West Nine Mile, the Old Dragonfly. Um, and we welcome everybody to come in and see our design concepts as we're going forward to, uh, on our Preserve America Wayfinding Project. So come on down to downtown Ferndale, do all your holiday shopping local, keep our dollars local, and support our great merchants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice job with the ICE Festival. Everyone did a nice job.
Mayor, council, my name is Leslie Coxon, I live at one six nine University Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission to present this month's green tip, which is how to have a greener holiday. First, use caution when buying artificial Christmas trees. About eighty percent are manufactured in China, and many of these contain PVC or lead, which produce toxic pollution during manufacturing. Buying an artificial Christmas tree produced in the United States highly reduces the chances that it contains these materials. When buying a real-cut Christmas tree, make sure it's locally grown. You can find a list of local growers from the Michigan Christmas Tree Association website, or you can find them at our very own lot at the First United Methodist Church on Woodward and Pearson. The best alternative to having a tree is to grow your own, either in your yard or in a pot. Potted trees may be moved indoors during the holidays, but will require proper care to keep them alive. Second, a large source of waste at the holidays is gift wrap. Consider buying only non-metallic wrap, wrapping paper that can be recycled, and wrapping paper made with recycled content. A low-cost, green alternative to buying wrapping paper is to reuse newspaper, comics, magazines, grocery, paper grocery bags, and fabric wrap gifts. Instead of buying bows, consider garnishing presents with natural decorations like leaves, flowers, evergreen sprigs, and pine cones. The Sierra Club estimates that if every home in the U.S. did this for only three gifts, we would save enough paper to pay, to cover forty-five thousand football fields, and enough ribbon to tie a bow around the earth. Third, save the environment and your pocketbook by changing to LED lights instead of regular ones. They last a lot longer, and they use only about ten percent of the energy. To find this green tip and all of the FBS's previous green tips, you can find them by searching for green tips at the City of Ferndale website. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. No more wonderful news or excellent tips from the audience? Thank you. What a nice, uh, a nice call to audience today. Madam Clerk, next item.
We have the consent agenda, your honor. Item A, approval of the minutes of the November twenty-third and the, uh, December fourth and fifth meetings. Item B, approval to reappoint Deb Brayson, Krista Azar, Luke Forrest, and Kevin Clark to the Planning Commission. C, adoption of a resolution of support for the Great American Main Street Awards Competition. Item D, adoption of a resolution authorizing Councilwoman-elect Piana to attend a series of five seminars through the University of Michigan Dearborn's Institute for Local Government and the MML's Elected Officials Academy Weekender Program. Item E, approval to adopt ordinance number ten eighty-five updating the two thousand eight National Electric Code, Electrical Code. Item F, approval of amendment number one to the Water Service Contract with the City of Detroit. Item G, approval of an agreement to, um, allow the City of Lathrop Village to use the city's southwest storage yard for, as a transfer site for leaves. Item H, approval of the submittal of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Grant Reallocation Application. And item I, approval of the bills and payrolls as certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, well done. Uh, any items that, uh, council members or members of the audience wish to pull for further discussion? Not seeing any, then a motion to adopt the consent agenda in its entirety?
So moved. Support.
Councilwoman Baker moves, Councilwoman Gumbelton seconds to adopt the entire consent agenda, discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Gumbelton?
Yes.
Lennon is absent from the table, and Mayor Covey.
Yes, passes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Bear with me, we're running the new programs tonight.
Regular agenda, item, uh, A?
Regular agenda, item A, appointment of Duff Mahan to the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Thank you. Um, we have an opening on the Arts and Cultural Commission. Mr. Mahan has submitted a, his resume. Is there any request for information from members of council? Or a motion to place him on the, uh, commission?
I would move to appoint Duff Mahan, uh, to the Arts and Cultural Commission for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and ten.
Support. Thank you, motion made, seconded Baker. Um, Galloway? Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Gumbelton?
Yes.
Lennon is absent from the table, Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
Yes, as well, passes, Madam Clerk, next item.
Regular agenda, item B, consideration to adopt notice of intent resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner.
Um, thanks, your honor. I'm in jeopardy of losing my voice tonight, so I'm going to give you a brief overview of, of where we're at with the, um, uh, municipal building project and this step in it, and then, um, turn it over to Dave Asker and/or, um, Ms. Hubanks to help answer any questions you might have. Um, back on November twenty-fourth, uh, the city received four design-build proposals, um, for the municipal building renovation and expansion project. Those are currently being analyzed, um, by Plant Moran Cressa. At this point in the process, um, council needs to adopt a notice of intent resolution authorizing and directing the city clerk to publish a notice of intent to issue municipal securities, also known as bonds, um, pursuant to the Revised Municipal Finance Act. The notice of intent states a maximum amount of debt that may be issued, but the council may later decide to issue less or not issue any debt at all if the project doesn't proceed. Um, the notice also includes the purpose of the securities, the payment source, the right of referendum on the issuance of those, uh, securities. Uh, the notice must be published not less than forty-five days before the council awards, uh, the design-build contract. The next steps in the process are that in January, the council will be reviewing, um, project financing, and then the issue will come before the council on, on the regular meeting of February eighth, and then on Monday, February twenty-second, there's another regular meeting, and that is when, um, the guaranteed maximum price of each of these proposals expires. So in order to have the forty-five-day notice run its course, um, by February eighth, when the council may make a decision, that notice of intent, um, needs to be issued shortly, hence it coming before council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Brunner. Did you want further explanation from, uh, Finance Director or Mr. Asker from Plant Moran?
Do either of you have anything to add to that? Then I guess not.
Well, then we'll open it up to the city council to ask any questions, and perhaps they still could speak.
Sure.
What questions, uh, are here from the table?
This just means we're going to post it, and we're not selling any, correct?
That's correct, it's just to issue a notice of intent, it doesn't obligate the city to do anything.
Just a formality, then, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, it's required, um, by, uh, a state statute that governs municipal finance.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if we want to open it to discussion, if you guys are ready.
I don't see any other questions from the audience or the, uh, table, so a motion could be made.
I move to adopt the attached notice of intent resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation capital improvement bonds for the purpose of constructing or improving the district court, the police station, and city hall in an amount not to exceed seven point five million dollars.
Support. Motion made by Baker and, uh, seconded by Galloway. Discussion? Okay, I just want to share that even though this vote doesn't obligate us to do anything, um, and I realize the council still has the option of making any decision it wishes to in February on building the courthouse and/or renovating the police department and/or renovating the city hall, um, I'm going to vote against it, um, because of my history of opposing all three projects. Any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Gumbelton?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Covey?
No.
Motion passes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Regular agenda, item C, consideration of DDA parking recommendations.
Mr. Brunner, anything you'd like to introduce first before the DDA Director does a presentation for us?
No, we'll go right into the presentation, thank you.
Christina, you're on.
Okay, and we're going to get the PowerPoint going. Um, I'm here on behalf of the city's parking committee and the DDA's parking committee. Um, are you finding it, Chris?
Yes, hit it twice.
Oh, it's coming, there we go. Um, and we know that council has seen, um, parts of this, um, presentation, but really for the purpose of our community at home and our guests in the audience, we wanted to go through really the history of why we're here today and, and talking about parking at this point. Um, in two thousand and six, the DDA, um, on behalf of the city, conducted a parking study analysis, um, to, uh, do an inventory, an analysis of where our parking, uh, demand and supply was, and what type of improvements we needed to make to the parking system. Uh, we knew then that, um, our parking system was in jeopardy, and that we needed to make improvements to it, and that we have been undervaluing our parking system all along. Uh, why the DDA has brought this to your attention now is that recently we've been receiving, um, phone calls, and basically a call to action to respond to the increase in demand in parking downtown, and both from residents and businesses. Residents were complaining that, um, employees and customers were parking on the streets around the downtown area, um, as well as businesses, um, noticing a substantial drop in their, uh, sales on very busy downtown days, such on, uh, a typical Saturday, uh, shopping day, which is usually the highest generating, uh, sales day for our downtown businesses. Um, as we started investigating these two items, residential neighborhood pass as a potential, um, in order to, um, restrict who is parking in our residential neighborhoods, we also then, uh, looked into, uh, engaging an employee shuttle program to move employees out of the downtown to private parking lots, so that way we would free up parking spaces for consumers, which is really what we want, parking in our system in the premium spaces, um, the on-street spaces, and the, um, places, um, that are closest to our businesses, so it's convenient for them. We, what we found out along the way, though, is that, uh, our system is really broke, um, and it needs a little bit of tweaking, and a lot of tweaking in many areas. Uh, if we want to go down to the next slide. Looking into the residential pass system, before we could really go into that further, uh, we feel that residents have to have more of a voice and input. We only spoke to a, a small group of residents who were, uh, calling us and talking to us, but we really feel that we have to get more of the neighborhoods involved to value the pros and cons of a residential parking permit. The other thing that would happen is that looking at, um, establishing that pass, we would automatically increase the demand of our parking system by moving both employees and consumers who have been parking in the residential neighborhoods back into our public system. So we knew that we would not be able to do this right away, and there would be other steps that we would have to take first. Uh, the other component was really the shuttle program, and when we were looking at the comparison of, um, pricing, uh, compared to our parking pass that employees can purchase, is that it was going to cost an employee four dollars a day for a round-trip, um, ticket, uh, to get to work versus a dollar eighty-two a day for a parking pass. And if ultimately our goal is to get to, uh, a parking deck, we know that we're going to need a shuttle system down the road. Uh, so we needed to start to bring some balance between these two things, and looking at our long-range projections. And as the DDA, uh, established a game plan for this, and, uh, on your table, I gave you a list of businesses that we approached, and, um, have a few comments on them, just to kind of give you an idea of some of the comments that came back from businesses, um, but we really just did not see the participation that we wanted to, and we pursued restaurants first, knowing that restaurants have the highest volume of employees, and, uh, hopefully getting them on board, encouraging them to be the first ones to make a difference in our downtown. And, um, for the most part, what you saw is, uh, businesses that were concerned about safety, the cost, and really, uh, the availability of this, and would their employees, um, truly take this. Uh, we looked at a seven-day-a-week system, and then, because we were getting a lack of participation, we actually then looked at, could we even do it just on the three day? So the other part of the handout that I just gave you, um, is also a short spreadsheet, um, analysis spreadsheet on the shuttle costs for just a three-month period for only the weekends, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And, um, based on the number of businesses that we had, at least committing upfront, saying, "Yes, I think we can do this many employees," we were finding that we had a shortfall of about twenty-five hundred dollars a month in order to run the system just on that weekend basis. Um, so, you can go on to the next slide. Um, so as we're looking at the system further, what other changes do we need to do in order to encourage people to use the shuttle, we were also finding more and more that employees really were not paying for parking, they're paying, uh, they were parking on the residential neighborhood area, and so to get them into a shuttle program, that is more expensive than our, even our parking passes, um, was really putting us in a predicament. As you can see by our supply and demand for, um, downtown Ferndale, we have over twenty-five hundred, um, parking spaces that are both public and private. There is a daytime deficit right now of a hundred and fifteen parking spaces, and an evening deficit of almost five hundred parking spaces. This is critical, we did not have this just a few years ago. We had a deficit, but not this large, and it continues to grow as development grows. And we are now at a point, in terms of development, that we are not going to continue to grow. We are turning people away, potentially, who would come in and do either office development or a larger development in the downtown area, because there isn't ample enough parking, and there is nothing that we're doing to make that change. We're doing some on-street parking, which is great, adding in bumpouts here and there, but it's not enough for what we really need to provide. So looking at the overall solutions, we had a look at the entire system. In order to get to a parking deck, we have to look at passes, we have to look at enforcement, meters, parking fines, the residential passes, and land use planning. And I have a few people here with me today that are going to help me with this presentation, but I'm here to talk to you, no, you can go on, you're right, is really to talk about our goal. Our goal is that parking deck. We want parking to be convenient, safe, accessible, and above all, above the average in terms of supply and demand, because we know our future depends on it. And this will help us to address both our consumers and our residents' needs. The locations that we've looked at, and there were four, um, initial sites, we have now narrowed it down to two sites, the Withington Parking Lot, I have, one half of the Withington Parking Lot, uh, and then on the east side, uh, the city hall parking lot, knowing that we need to service both east and west of Woodward. And our initial site that we must concentrate on first is going to be, number one, the Withington Parking Lot site. When you're looking at parking deck financing, uh, for that site, a, uh, parking deck of four hundred and fifty-five spaces, uh, without equity, the bond debt on that annually can be about six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. We would also want to try to buy that down, because as you can We would also want to try to buy that down, because as you can see, as you incrementally buy that bond debt down, your annual coverage dramatically goes down. So there's going to be many things that we're going to have to put in place to get to that point. So we need to start planning for the future. If we do not, development will stop. Investing in our city's parking system now will grow our downtown and increase private reinvestment. Attracting new investors is going to be critical, and this is something that we can do as a city. We cannot depend on developers anymore to bring it to us. We need to start bringing it to them. And there are other items in terms of planning that we can do with our planning commission, looking at our ordinances, that we need to start looking, as new development comes in, how do we address that in terms of the increase in demand on our system? And this is why, another reason why our shuttle system is going to be so important. So as we're building a parking deck down the road, we need to be able to shuttle people around to other areas of parking while that deck is under construction for months. Right now, I'm going to let Veronica Luzic tell you a little bit more about enforcement and meters.
Hello. All right. So, okay, right now enforcement is one of the steps in creating a better, more healthy parking system. And as we know right now, currently, parking enforcement is inconsistent due to budgeting constraints. So right now what's happening is people are pulling in for parking, and they're taking their chances. Maybe they're feeding the meter, maybe they're not, because there's a possibility that they may not get a ticket. And if they do park for the day, what's $6 if you're parking for eight hours? Which means then the meters aren't creating any revenue to build the deck. So by increasing enforcement, we'll hopefully see less tickets, but increased meter revenue for the parking deck. So meters. Actually, I find this kind of exciting. This is, I think it'll make things easier for everybody. One of the items is switching to multi-space meters, which is, I think, I don't know how many people here find themselves looking for a quarter, they're shopping, and they're running around. How many people find themselves at the salon, and they have to run out with their hair and curlers and foil, and they're trying to feed the meter? So this will be helpful. These meters will be taking any denomination and credit cards, which I think is fantastic. Some of the other things here are, change the meters that are currently here at city hall, the 30-minute spots to put meters in, in the court, parking lot, and hopefully get some people who are working on West Nine to park in the American Legion. There are 20 spots currently free there, so they can park and just walk to their place The next step is to implement a sliding scale for parking meter fees. So what this means is on-street parking will be raised to $1, and the lots behind the stores will be 75 cents, and so the further you get away is 50 cents. So if you want to save money, you walk a little, you pay 50 cents. But the whole idea of this is so that we want to create movement in front of the stores, so that you're paying, you're putting your quarters in, you're in, you're out, then most people, you know, if they're spending a longer amount of time downtown, they'll park further away, because it's less and they can get more for less, and if they're going running a Javahut or whatever, they can just get in, get out. So what this means to the bottom line is, what's happening currently is, as you see, the revenue of the meters is approximately $509,000. If we make these changes, it will mean $818,000, which will help us get closer to our bond debt, but still only 309, which means we're still short. So at this point, what we're doing is saving. So all these changes are helping us get closer to saving enough money to create a deck. And I think we all realize the money's going to have to come from multiple sources, and the meters are just one. The DDA will remain committed. I think this is a great team effort with the city parking committee and the DDA and all the businesses that are involved. And I think we're going to continue to look at future possibilities for investment, and at our annual planning meeting, we'll know a little bit better. I will, Jackie's going to give you the rest.
Hi, my name is Jackie Smith, and I'm the owner of the Candlewood Shop, and you guys have heard me up here before. I was asked to do this part of the presentation, because I'm somebody who buys a pass. So there are a few modifications in this presentation since the last time you received your council packet, so the corrections are, you'll see here. This is, everything that we're talking about is a collection of information, facts, and studies that have been, so we're bringing these recommendations to the table. This is just one of the methods with increasing parking to get a parking deck. The current rate right now is, for the parking pass, is $40 a month, and then we have discounts for three months and annual passes. The proposed pass that we're looking at doing is we're looking at two types. To encourage shuttle use in the future, we are looking at a discounted pass as well as a standard pass. And we did call it a premium pass before, but we have to look at, premium parking is really at the meters. So we're looking at a standard pass and a discounted pass. The discounted pass is for parking further away from the downtown area, and the standard pass is at Withington Lot, the Falvey East Breckenridge, and the Karaschnell Lot, which I believe is on Troy. And then we'll have some areas where no passes are allowed, and that's at the library, Como's, the big Troy lot behind Rosie's, and the one at Plantaban. So we want to encourage shuttle use. If it becomes, if that becomes an option, and to fund the deck, parking pass rate will need to increase. We want to encourage parking in the underused lots and have discounted options for those who need it. And this, we're recommending the areas where no passes are allowed, just because that's the prime area. And it's really important that we turn those meters over faster than slower. Knowing that increasing the parking pass, increasing the cost of the meters, we may drive parking further into the residential area, so we do need to take the next step with the residential pass. And we're looking to increase the cost of the passes in January, so we have a clean start for the first of the year. The discounted pass will stay the same, price-wise, and the standard pass will increase to $60 a month. For $3, for three months, it would be $150, and a year for $540. Again, premium is where the meters are. So, and anyone can make the option, have the option to feed the meters, not a problem. Be happy to take your money for that, because it's about feeding the parking deck at this point. We need to bring our prices up to compare. If you look at Royal Oak, their interior surface lots are $60 a month, their remote lots further away are $25 a month for passes, and they don't have any discounts for multi-month purchases. And then in Birmingham, it ranges from $30 to $55 a month, and again, no annual discount rate. So if you wanted a pass for a year in Royal Oak, we're talking $720 for premium, and $660 in Birmingham. And if you look at the parking pass, at a six-day work week, a lot of stores are there for six days a week, the owners see employees. It's $1.54 a day for a discounted pass, $2.30 a day for a standard pass. That's an increase of 76 cents per day. If you buy the annual standard pass, that's $1.73 per day. If you pay at the meter in eight-hour shift, it's $6 a day, once we increase it to 75 cents. A lot of stores, if they're smart, will have a pass for the store and they'll share it between employees. And that's what, that's what we do. The ticket, oh no, go back one. There's another thing I wanted to address on this, is the three-year-old parking study showed that on-street parking can bring in $800 a day to local businesses. Lot parking can bring in $500 a day to local businesses. Again, this is a three-year-old study. If you look at your 20 best shopping days in a month, that's $10,000 going into local businesses. On an average of $1,200 a month rent, that's paying rent for eight stores in one month. And if you don't think that your one parking spot that you're taking up as the owner or as the employee, I'm just one person. I say it to myself all the time, I do not want to park across the street, I don't want to park on Breckenridge, I want to park behind my store. I don't want to walk that far, I have boxes, I am very territorial about my parking space. But when I started looking at this, I said, so I could potentially bring in another $1,200 a month into my store if I have one more parking space? I can't argue that one. And increasing the, not having, not having pass parking on the streets, increasing the parking for that, turning those spaces over more, that just increases it tremendously. You know, just putting it in that way, you know, we're talking about a 76 cents a day increase, that is a lot, yet it's not at the same time, if you think about how much more money can come into your store if we all stepped up and made sure that we had premium parking for all of our customers. I'll go to the next one. Tickets and fines in Ferndale, this is the ugly part, nobody wants to talk about it. I have tickets, I still have to pay, I hate being honest like that. But the fines are the fines, and when we don't follow the rules, we have a fine. Where it's $6 for a parking ticket, and 25 after 72 hours if you don't pay it. Royal Oak is $8, Birmingham it's $7, now this is interesting, $7 for the first seven tickets, $25 for your eighth ticket in a calendar year. In Plymouth, it's up to $15, and then a $10 late fee. So everyone has, within 72 hours, it goes up. We're looking at increasing the tickets to, okay, yeah, go ahead. The, currently, all fines go from the general fund to the court budget, and that's $195,000 annually, that's 14,000 tickets. And what we're looking to do is create the auto parking fund ultimately being completely self-sufficient, that no money needs to come from any other area of the city, and that we want the parking fund to feed the parking fund and provide the parking fund. The goal is the deck. If we don't want the deck, then we don't have to do any of this stuff. But the goal is the deck to increase business, to increase the growth, because then we need to increase the parking fines, redirect the funds, so we can continue to grow in downtown The other proposal we have in front of you is increasing the parking ticket to $10 from $6. So $4 goes to the auto parking fund, and that'll generate an additional 56, almost $57,000 in funds. We also recommend that, as it says on the screen, all fines go to auto parking fund, and the auto parking fund pays for the ticket processing fees. Again, this is becoming very self-sufficient. And then we can generate $237, almost $238,000 towards a parking deck bond. If you combine the meter revenue, the parking fines, and it gets our bond revenue up to $546,000. If you remember the earlier slides, if we have a $1.5 million investment, that pretty much will take care of the cost of the parking deck going forward, and the auto parking fund being self-sufficient. We know that we need to repave the, repave the parking lots, we need to keep them updated, and this is all part of the process. So we're hoping to get the passes increased for January 1st, again, a clean start to the year, that meters and fines go up in the spring, and then if it's a perfect world and all the planets align, maybe spring of 2011, we can start building a parking deck. This has been a team effort coming together. The DDA Parking Committee received a lot of concerns from residents and businesses like mine. I got on the DDA Parking Committee because I went to the board meeting with just about a stick in my hand, because my, 75% of my business was going away. And they said, come on in, let's become part of this parking committee. And then together with the city parking committee, and then with the city council, we came together. This isn't one group at all, this is definitely a community issue. We all know that parking is a crisis right now. And if you're not aware that parking in downtown is a crisis, go and talk to any business or any resident in the downtown area, and they will give you 100 stories about why this is a crisis right now. I personally went into every store and restaurant that I could get into that was open, I did it over three days. And I spoke with several members of the community, especially people that came into my store. And I told them all, everyone I talked to, about the DDA Parking Committee, I talked about what we're proposing, and I invited them all in. As I said, personally, a day where there's no parking left in downtown Ferndale cost me 75% of my business. When I have a $20 day, because my customers call because they can't find parking spots, oh, it's a very sad day. No business can survive in that, or thrive in that, and that's why I'm volunteering my time in this, and doing a lot of research, going to a lot of meetings. And we've shared a lot of ideas here, and that's what these are at this point, is they're ideas. There could be more than one way of going about and solving this parking problem. There's a lot of options in front of us. One of the options is doing nothing, and the parking problem will solve itself, because stores will close. And that's, that's just the nature of the business. But what we're trying to do is look at options where the downtown businesses and the people who shop downtown, fund them the expansion and development of downtown through the cost of parking. So none of this goes on the shoulders of the entire Ferndale community. That's what we want, that's what I'm hoping to see, because this is where the growth is, and this is where it has to be sustained. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional presentations, Christina? What? I'm sorry. And maybe we could have the lights turned back on as well. I had a couple of questions, and Christina, maybe you could, you could start, and if you want to shift over to your other volunteers, that would be good as well, and I'm sure other members have questions. We're, we're still in the seeking information phase, and I'm sure that members of the audience wish to speak as well. I do want to share one thing, and that is that we ask the staff to break these items into, into individual pieces. So for example, there are possible motions that could come on the floor tonight and/or for tabling or for voting on. The first item would be the parking fine section, which would change the parking fines or tickets from $6 to $10. That'll be its own issue. The second item on our agenda to discuss would be the part about adjusting the boundaries of the prepaid parking permits. I'm sorry, there's four. The third one would be increasing the price of the prepaid parking tickets, and the fourth item would be to increase the price of metered parking. So folks in the audience, I would ask that you consider voicing your concerns perhaps on each item, although you're welcome to voice your concerns at any time. So if I may ask a couple of questions to start with. Christina, we had a work session last Monday on these issues and talked about a lot of stuff, and I don't recall the issue of issuing parking permits for residents ever coming up. Was that on last Monday's agenda?
Yeah, we did, we did discuss that, and that was one of the things where we felt that that would be a next step, and mostly because we really hadn't had time to go and talk to residents, like, a large group of residents. We'd only talked to a smaller group who really felt that, you know, they need, we, as a city, need to do something about addressing this issue. And I know the chief of police, he's been sent photos of people parking in front of their driveways, and I'm sure the police department has received many more responses in regards to that, so he might be able to address that a little bit further. But we did, but we did talk about it, but very briefly, because really what we were concentrating on was going over, how do we get to a parking deck, and all the various points of it, so.
I understand, but do you, do you believe that if we were to enact some of these changes, that that would increase the pressure on residential? that that would increase the pressure on residential streets and residential areas of customers and employees parking?
Well, I think that you will still have that, um, influx. I think there's going to continue to be a growing demand, um, in terms of consumers coming to downtown Ferndale. We have, um, Diablo's that's going to be opening in the next few months, so there's going to be another spike in our demand. Um, but then naturally, as, um, prices shift and go up, you're going to have some people who will opt not to pa-, um, pay for a pass. So the question is, are they walking from home, riding their bike, or are they going and parking in a residential neighborhood, which we know that's happening already right now? Because that was what we were told by business owners as we went around to talk to them about the shuttle system. So, yes, I think there will be an increase there. Um, and for those two reasons, um, and not alone, those two reasons. Um, so I think that a residential pass would probably really need to be looked at very soon in order to address that issue. Otherwise, I think we're going to have probably more residents coming to the table and, and talking about this as well. Um, but I think, um, one of the things that we've talked about doing is holding a residential meeting and, and meeting with as many as possible, um, and to develop a game plan as to what do we need to do as a community to bring it forward to council, and getting maybe a little more direction from council on how you would like us to proceed if so.
All right. Let me ask the council members, I mentioned earlier that the, these items were broken into four pieces. Would the council be willing or interested in proceeding with these items one at a time? Or are there overall general questions that you would like to ask first?
I prefer, myself prefer one at a time, and I, I do have a question.
Is there any other comments?
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
You're cool with that?
Yep.
I appreciate it.
Um, I'm fine with one at a time, although some of these don't make sense unless they're taken together, so I would hope that if, you know, for example, we, we vote to create new parking areas, that we would then vote to change the fee structure. You know, some, a couple of these hang together, so we'll have to...
Kinda, you're right.
Yeah.
Although you could change, you could, you could create two levels of parking and...
They're just talking about the perimeters.
The permits, and you could still tweak or, or ask to renegotiate the amounts, but I hear what you're saying.
Oh, the amounts, yeah. I, yeah.
All right. Unless, I don't see any major objections. So let's, let's go with the first item, which is to increase parking fines pursuant to City Code Section 1888, which is the ticket you get when you don't feed the meter or your meter expires, and you get a ticket that currently costs $6, and we would change that to $10, which is in line or cheaper than most other cities, and $4 would go automatically into the parking fund. Does anyone have questions from the table on that issue? Or, or the audience, you do?
Well, make a motion. They can't speak.
Uh, audience members can seek information, can't they?
I have some questions.
I'm sorry. I can hear your question.
Well, let's allow this, the audience to ask a question or two, and then we can, if that's all right with council.
Okay. Um, so, uh, Mr. Bruner, I think it was a year ago that the city purchased, I think it was 100 meters, new meters, that have multi-change nickel, dime, quarters. What, what parking lot did those meters go into?
I'm not sure, um, but if you repeat the question, Mr. Fattides, who just walked in the back of the room, might be able to answer, perhaps Christina knows.
Byron might know better, but I, I believe those were on-street. Byron, they were asking, um, the, the multi-coin meters that you recently purchased about a year ago, where those went?
Could you ask that question again? I'm sorry, I had to step out.
I asked the question. Where are the meters that don't just take quarters, but also take dimes and nickels?
Where are they? They are the on-street meters.
On-street?
Yes, there, those are the electronic meters. And if the city were to go ahead and decide to raise rates in the parking lots, we have the mechanical meters in the lots, and you're looking at $150 a meter for the electronic meters. So just be aware of that, if that's a proposal to raise the rates. Currently, they're 50 cents an hour. For example, on the on-street parking, all the on-street parking is, 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 uh, electronic meters. And they were at one time mechanical meters, and we paid about $150 per meter to make that changeover, to do that. We have the old Duncan meters. Duncan no longer makes them. We have to get them through a second party. And so it, it would be better that, uh, if we're going to, obviously, there seems to be a combination of going ahead with, uh, some pay and display, uh, parking mechanisms and, and meters, but if, if we are going to raise rates, uh, we, you're going to, you're looking at $150 a meter, somewhere around there.
Byron, is, I'm sorry, is that cost increase even if we go up in increments of 25 cents on those meters?
Yeah, because, you know, we, you would have to go to electronic meters. So, um, that's, I want council to be aware of that, if, if in case council looks to increase rates, you have to give us some lead time, and we'd have to price out, um, how many meters you want to, you know, um, you know, make 75 cents an hour or whatever you want to choose.
So even if, it, you know, you could still use quarters to get to the amount, we'd have to replace the whole meter? We can't...
The mechanisms are no longer made. They're old meters, the mechanical meters. Now, you can make price changes on the on-street meters, because they're electronic, and it's just a matter of getting, um, uh, it's a little computer, it's about $3,000, that actually made the electronic change. But on the mechanical meters, you can't do that. So just be aware of that as you go along.
You can never change the amount on the mechanical meters.
The parts aren't available.
So, um, in your opinion, would it be better to look at going to the multi-station meters?
I think, I think it's, I think it's a combination of the multi-pay and display, um, um, mechanisms or meters, and a combination of that electronic meters.
Okay.
Because, you know, for example, it wouldn't make sense to put, you know, those things are expensive, though.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't make sense, for example, on Worthington, you've got like 33 spaces in that Bay Park, and between Plantavon and Woodward. It would make, you know, that's such a long stretch, that you'd have to put at least three or four of those out there. It's just best to keep the meters there and make them electronic meters. But, you know, lots like the library lot, you could get by, I think, with one, so centralized, it's small enough. Or you could put it at the exit where people walk out, they just, you know, punch in, you know, their, their spot, their numbered spot, and then go where they have to go, just by the time they need.
Okay.
So I think it's going to be a combination. Even in Birmingham, uh, it's, it's a combination.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Byron. Ironically, that, the issue of whether to use different kinds of meters or going to a big board isn't even on our list of things. But Mr. Pollock, let me remind you, sir, that we're breaking this into pieces, so the issue we're talking about right now is changing the tickets from $6 to $10.
Okay.
Well, do you have a question?
I have a question for Christina on her presentation and some numbers that were there.
Okay.
Well, I wanted to ask them earlier, but you ran right to this.
Can we have a motion? Can we make a motion, and then it's official?
A motion to...
We have to make a motion, and then it becomes open to public comment. It's not a public hearing.
You're true. I thought questions can be asked before...
Not if a motion's not made. So can we just do that, so that we can have discussion?
Sure. I have a motion if nobody has a comment.
Go ahead.
I move to adjust.
It's official.
I move to increase the parking fines pursuant to City Code Section 1888 from $6 to $10 if paid within 72 hours, and allocate $4 of every ticket to the Auto-Mile Parking Fund.
Motion made, Lennon, seconded by Baker. The issue is changing the ticket price fee. Mr. Pollock, do you have a comment or...
I have a question on some, on numbers that were in the presentation that won't fall into any of the four categories.
Uh, is it, what is the issue?
The question is, um, on the presentation, you had daytime parking deficits of 115. Was that weekend or weekday deficits?
Yeah, that's looking at the entire week.
So on average, it's 100, 115? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. It's actually a good question. Okay, we have an issue of raising the parking fine from $6 to $10 when you forget to put in a quarter or you let your meter run out. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Gumbelton?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Cuffin?
Yes. And Becky? Pay your fines. Is that your name, Becky?
Becky.
Becky? Better pay your fines, they're going up as we sit here.
Yeah, it's getting up like that.
All right. Uh, next item is to create the discount and premium prepaid parking areas, and then we'll talk about the costs or the fees. And my first question is, the paperwork we have, Christina, which is dated December 14th, is that today?
Yeah.
You call them discount and premium parking areas, but during the presentation, the words have changed.
Standard.
And now you call them standard, which is premium, and discount, which was...
Discount. Discount remains discount, and premium just, just changed to standard.
Okay.
It's semantics.
You changed that word today, from, from the time the...
Well, that, what you received, actually, though, I did that last week.
Okay.
I think that the memo that you're referring to is from the city manager?
Oh.
So, maybe...
You're, is this, this is from you, sir, the 14th?
Yes.
Okay, he didn't get the memo on changing the name of the, of the parking area. Okay. What questions do council members have?
I have one regarding this. On the prepaid's, there's five or six lots that you have, that you're not going to issue any parking permits for.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for example, library lot, Lux lot. Library lot abuts the law firm. There's only, I think, three, maybe two handicap spots in there, so if an employee at the law firm, he can't get a permit, is handicapped, arrives to work, and handicap spaces are unavailable, and they have to put money in the meter, and that handicapped individual's going to have to come from his or her desk every hour or so, come down and feed the meter. Correct? Same would apply to any employee that works too long, any of the businesses that have but the Lux lot.
I'm not, I guess that would be a question for, um, our Chief of Police, on how they handle that? If a handicap parking permit, or the pass works in any other spot, I'm not sure.
No. Okay. Well, I know the, answer the question, the guy's going to get a ticket. If there's no handicap spots available, chief, and a handicapped individual parks in the meter lot with a handicap sticker visible, uh, he or she is still subject to a violation, correct?
If they don't feed the meter.
If they don't feed the meter.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's, Christina, that's what I'm getting at. So now, we run into an issue with you signaling out some lots...
Mm-hmm.
...that are not going to be able to get permits for.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Mike? I'm just asking, because I had another one.
No, go ahead.
Now I forgot what it was. Um, oh, during the presentation, and I, I'm supportive of our goals of trying to build a, a parking deck, but it was mentioned that an average work week might be six days a week, and yet I think that's more for store owners than store employees, but we have businesses downtown. We have lawyers, doctors, CPAs, attorneys, who work a five-day week, so, so their passes are going to actually cost more dividing them by five days. Is that, that's...
Yeah, that, that's, that would be the math on it. I haven't run the math on that specifically. This was just for presentation purposes. But I would say a majority of our businesses are retail or service-oriented businesses.
I wanted to ask Mr. Bruner, on your, on what you gave to us, I don't understand this second box that's below the...
The, um, the chart that you're referring to is labeled annual prepaid parking permit parking fees, and is presented as information only, and what it shows is that, in the first line where there's a number one and it says month, if you bought a monthly permit, month after month, throughout the year, your total cost for parking is $480. If you buy a, a three-month permit or a quarterly permit, a quarterly permit for four quarters out of the year, then your total cost for parking during the year is $320. And then I've done a little math to show you that the discount, the difference between the two is $160. So you get a $160 discount by buying, uh, quarterly passes instead of monthly passes, and then you have the, the rates there for a year, what the annual pass costs, and then the discount, what you save by buying an annual, um, permit as opposed to buying one every month. And that was just...
Okay.
Um, for informational purposes only, just to show, um, you know, how much more people pay by buying, uh, quarterly or an, or annual permits.
So those high, high amounts on the right are if you bought them in the small increments?
Well...
$720?
That's if you bought one every month at the highest rate.
That's, thank you.
That's, yeah, that's the new proposed premium rate, which we're now calling the standard rate.
If you bought one a month, 12 months out of the year?
Right.
Okay, thank you. What other questions do members have?
Oh, I, you know what, I did want to respond to Mike, because I was just trying to think, is there any other comparisons? And actually, when we did, um, contact Royal Oak and Birmingham, Birmingham does not sell passes for on-street or surface lots. They sell passes only for the parking docks.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay? Um, and same with Royal Oak. They have certain parking lots that they do sell for surface lots, or parking passes that they sell for surface, but not all of them.
And I understand that.
And I understand the, the issue, and I think that's maybe something that we can try to work through, but...
Well, um, West Troy lot, the Breckenridge lots, um, possibly the Roggio Grady lots and the Plantavon lot, I don't have a problem with. But I do have a problem with the library lot and Lux lot, because there are, right now, there are people with permits that park there, and also but a lot of businesses, and particularly the nine-order office building, the law firm, and Comoles as a school of employees, and up and down there, that we might have to force a, a handicapped individual to come out and feed the meter, so...
I think we could, just a suggestion, it's a great question that you brought up, but we could, you know, as we're looking at if we want, want to approve it that way, we could, uh, put something in to have, for people who have accessibility issues, that they get a permit in that lot.
Well, that's a good recommendation, because as it stands now, I agree with everything here.
Yeah.
And I can't vote for it, because there's two lots that I don't agree with. So we need to tweak that a little bit.
Kate has a question, and we'll get Steve to you, sir.
And I think Brian had a, has kind of too. And I think that I, I understand, um, the line in the, in the memo, one of the things that we talked about, um, in the, the DDA Parking Committee was how to deal with the, I mean, not just residential surrounding the downtown, but the downtown residential, and where those residents would park.
That's a good question.
And where they're currently parking. And did I read this correctly, Christina, that now, um, the lot between where the new Diablo's will be, um, and the, um, office supply store?
Right, the Kara Chanel or Chanel Kara? I can't remember which one it was.
Would that, would those spaces be for anyone with that type of permit, or just for the residents?
What I had put down was only for that they be premium, um, more so because we want to continue to move, um, a majority of employees to further outlots as much as possible. So that way, we have more space for consumers.
Where would the residents who live in those apartments on Nine Mile Park?
That would be Kara Chanel, or Chanel Kara.
But they have to pay the...
They currently pay for a parking pass right now.
Okay.
And that would, they could still park overnight there?
Yes, yes. And one thing that, that they are parking right now in the Troy Street parking lot, and sometimes they do park on-street at night.
Thank you.
Mr. Salvaggio?
Uh, Steve Salvaggio, Western Market. I have a couple of suggestions. One, that we would add more handicap parking. As you know, Mayor, um, and some of the council, I recently broke my leg, and I have to use handicap, and, uh, there's definitely a shortage of handicaps all over, and, um, not just in Ferndale, but in general. Well, some of the bigger land use areas have plenty of it, but, uh, when you're looking But, uh, when you're looking for a handicap spot, Councilman Lennon is correct. And you, it'd be crazy to have to go back down to put quarters in on a hourly basis. But maybe to offer one or two more spots for individual lots, or look at them individually and have some, um, different laws. If you have a pass in your window, maybe you, you know, I, I, I'm not sure how to address it, but my suggestion was to add more spaces for handicap. Being that I have experienced it myself. Second thing is that on the yearly passes, my suggestion is, um, possibly debit, having people use a debit card and taking a monthly, um, increments. So if you were to buy a pass for, for a whole year, you'd be able to pay for it on a monthly basis. Because I know personally, if I had to pay for a yearly pass all at one time, I would never do it, because even, you know, I have a decent income, it just, I don't have that much laying around in my checking account all the time. And, uh, to pay for it all at one time would be a hardship. Whereas if you could debit it once a month, and I know Bob had come up with a, um, monthly, or a, how much it was per month on a, the cheapest one.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure what the price would be, but, um, it'd be a lot easier to digest. So that's a suggestion that I have.
Good one of that, too, Steve. Mr. Kramer?
Brian Kramer, Rosie O'Grady's. Maybe there was a misunderstanding, you said, "Don't get up during the public portion, because we're going to have a chance to do a public when we got to the parking." So I think there's a lot of people here to talk that didn't get up.
I apologize if I confused anyone. We are now in the parking discussion phase, and I'll try to let everyone speak.
Okay. Everything you hear here tonight was a lot of ideas. A lot of people put a lot of time into these ideas, but they're just ideas. The council's got to get a formalized plan. They're all short-term fixes here. We need a long-term plan. You just heard the DDA formally tell you that the downtown's not going to grow. Without a successful downtown, Ferndale is not going to be successful. I've said it in emails to numerous people, the city council has to prioritize. Obviously, city services have to come first, the fire, the police, city hall. But next, you're going to have to pick between a structure and a city hall. I don't believe that you can have both. I've got caught up in these conversations about the city operates separately from the DDA and the DDA operates separate from the city of Ferndale, and whose money is it? It's confusing just getting wrapped up in that. It's, it's the city's money. The DDA can't formally go out and get a bond for $7 million to build a structure without city council approving it. City council can go out and get a bond without the DDA approving it. So it is the city council that controls if we get a parking deck. And while we're going through these short-term solutions, and they're great ideas, and people put a lot of time into them, you guys need a formalized plan. And I'm hoping you'll make it five issues and not four issues that, you know, like you're spending money to get proposals for city hall. Nobody could just come up here a year ago and say, "Hey, it's 7.5 million for the bond." You guys spend a lot of money to get a plan. You have to spend this money to get a real plan on where we're going to put the structure. You just took a big step, the DDA formally said where they want to put it. And the next one is how you're going to fund it, where the revenue's going to come from. I don't think the DDA is asking you guys to commit to 7.5 million without a plan. You guys need to plan. Um, we have a deficit of 500 spots. That's without Diablo's. Diablo's is going to put an increase of another 150 spots on it. It's not going to get better. Business owners and residents are calling the chief of police, the city manager, the DDA. There's no parking, okay? And some people are directing those calls to the DDA. There's nothing Christina can do or the DDA. It, it's a city problem, and we need to address the problem. If we're not going to immediately address the problem, stop development. I'm putting in the emails that I'm getting to you guys. I get a call at least once a month, "Hey, Brian, buy this building in Ferndale, buy this building in Ferndale, make it into another concept." Some of the buildings that people are calling me about are 10,000 or 15,000 square feet. It'd be another 500-person restaurant. If you think it's broke now, adding one more restaurant of that size would destroy it. Regarding the, um, the four issues, the $6 to $10, I know you guys already voted on that. I'm asking that you take the $4 and say, "Listen, that's earmarked for the parking structure."
We did.
For the parking structure, not the parking...
That's how it gets to the structure.
I worry it gets spent on maintenance and trees and other things.
We understand.
Um, the parking meters, I'm asking if you guys even consider increasing the parking meters. You make it twofold, and you have to have the electronic meters to do it. It is so frustrating, you just don't have the money to put in the meters. It's not that you don't want to pay the meter. You know, who's got $2 and $3 change in their, in their car in their pocket? The permits, that's a hefty increase. I mean, you just had, over the past couple weeks, a couple business owners tell you $30 is the date for them. To increase these yearly fees to 600 bucks, that's huge. If you're going to ask the business owners to take this big brunt and, and pay all these extra, I call them taxes, but extra fees, please meet us halfway, formally commit to a parking structure, and start saying, "This money's earmarked for the parking structure." And DDA, if you can come up with 300, 400, 500 grand, the city will put in a million, and the city will promote getting the structure. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Tiffany Gagne. Um, good job, Brian, so many, so many great points. You voted on the first section. Yay, we got through one of them. The D, as Brian had stated, the DDA's not asking you for $7 million, but they're asking you to vote on something right now with all, without all of the information. They said a majority of the, the people who park in this city are retailers. How many businesses are there in the Ferndale building and with their employees? We don't know that number. How many businesses' employees are there at the McColl Building? We don't know that number. How many employees are at the law firm? We don't know that number. And Councilman Lennon brought up the point about the, the, um, handicap parking. Why they want to eliminate metered parking back there in one area and then push them all to the residence, residential streets? I, I don't get it. And my suggestion is, the rest of the three or four points, as Brian suggested, go back to the drawing board. Let's get some more input from the residents and businesses, even Director Shepherd Desias. Christina, I'm sorry, I always confuse that, is it Shepherd Desius or Desia Shepherd? Okay, I apologize. She said they only had an opportunity to speak to a few residents. Let's talk to more residents. Let's talk to more business owners and their employees. Let's get more information. There could be a lot of people out here who have some ideas. Let's hear them all and then come back and figure out what we can do. This constant comparison to Birmingham and Royal Oak, that's got to end. Birmingham doesn't even have a DDA. They only have a PSD, it's operated throughout their, um, city hall. Royal Oak, their DDA raises so much money, they were able to renovate their courthouse. We are not Royal Oak, we are not Birmingham. We are Ferndale. Let's be Ferndale. Let's support our businesses. Let's get everyone fired up about all of this. Let's just do it. I mean, no disrespect to the people who have done a ton of work on this. Let's do more, though, let's figure it out. We can do it together. The DDA and the businesses should work together, and this council should be confident that they are making a decision based on a full disclosure and, and, um, input from everyone. Thank you very much.
Your Honor, Council, Bill Asantowski from, um, Foley in Mansfield. We're the law firm down the street here at 130 East Nine Mile. And I just want to let you know the, um, um, impact of raising the permits would have on our firm alone. Currently, we have 37 passes. We're paying $6,600 a, a year. Uh, next year, we're going to have 38 employees. The cost will be $20,520. It's an increase of $13,860 just for parking. Our firm pays for all of our employees to park. So that's going to be borne by our firm. Uh, unfortunately, I can't get our lawyers to work six days a week. We work five, we work nine to five. I come downtown with my wife and my family on the weekends, and I think that the parking problem is substantially different on the weekends. And I had someone from my office go out and look at the lots, um, this afternoon at noon to see how full they were. And in the library lot, and I realize that the library's closed now, so there's going to be an impact when that's open. But I think a lot of those folks use the city hall lot. But, uh, there, there were 63 spaces, there were 31 cars in the lot. The fallible lot, there were 52 spaces, there were 23 cars in the lot. Como's lot, there were 42 spaces with 15 cars parking in the lot at noon. Um, the Nine Mile parking in front of our building, uh, there are eight spaces, there were three cars parked. The Troy Street spots that include the bays, there are 18, there were 10 cars parked. So less than 50% of the parking on a weekday was being utilized. Now, I realize it's more congested west of Nine Mile. But, um, I, I do support the idea of a deck for this city. I think it's a wonderful idea, I realize that we have to have it. But I just wanted to point out the impact that raising it at this level to a firm that, whose clients are generally out of state. So we don't use spaces for clients, it's, it's just our employees. And it's a significant impact, especially in these economic times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asantowski. And Councilman Galloway pointed out, and he's correct, that we don't have a motion on the table. So in order to, I'm not doing this just to you, Mr. Pollica, you will get to speak. Go ahead. But technically, we should have a, a motion on the table, which would then allow full discussion, including members of the audience. And so...
My understanding of the rules of procedure, Your Honor, are that council members can request information from staff or whoever's presenting at the podium. Uh, once a motion is made, then members of the audience or council can speak to the motion, but it's limited to the particulars of the motion.
You are correct. You are correct, and I was being a little lax and a little lenient, except for Greg. So let's, uh, get a motion on the table, shall we?
I would move that we adjust the boundaries of the prepaid parking permit areas pursuant to City Code, Section 1887, uh, as described in the December 14th, 2009 memo from the city manager. Uh, and are those the right terms?
Well, according to, um, Christina, the preference is to replace regular prepaid parking with discount prepaid parking and premium prepaid parking with standard.
So that's, uh, that would be my motion.
You, you could make the motion, call it anything you want, red and blue, parking, but... So you'll go with the, Christina's...
Standard and discount. Description says...
There's a motion, it needs a second, and this is to just change the, uh, the boundaries of the two and create the two levels of parking. We're not yet talking about the amounts of money, the cost, the price, correct?
I'll second it for discussion.
Correct. Councilwoman Baker has seconded the motion, um, which is to discuss now creating two levels of permit parking. We're not discussing the price changes yet.
This is perfect.
Perfect.
Um, kind of to, to feed off the gentleman from Foley Mansfield, um, I honestly think that council needs to consider three levels instead of two, and keep the current level as a daytime weekday, that that pass is only good until 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and that way, if they're at the meter after 6:00 PM, then they're fined accordingly. But I don't think that our daytime weekday business owners should be penalized, because most of the issue is in the evening and it's on the weekend. And these businesses during the day are trying to bring more business during the day. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollica.
It's a McMahon on behalf of the Ferndale Center Building. Uh, Mr. Wolf wanted to be here but could not, for better or worse, you have me. Um, the, um, the issues that have been raised, I find if I wait long enough, most of the things I would have said have been said, and I think one of the things was just addressed. There may indeed be a need for a third level of pass. Um, if you want professionals downtown, lawyers, architects, mortgage bankers, real estate agents, doctors, you need to have access to close parking. Not parking that is several blocks away and must be walking distance. Lawyers and these types of professionals frequently leave their offices during the day to go to other places. To ask them to constantly come back and forth, unlike someone who owns a shop and may be there for eight hours a day, they need quicker access. I also submit that by having the parking further away, you are going to have these professionals parking on the street, because they're going to decide to park as close as possible to feed the meters, which means the street parking, the most valuable parking you have for shop owners, is going to be taken by people who are there all day. So the impact that you're seeking to avoid, I think, may be exacerbated by some of the proposals. And as was said earlier in the, the presentation, tweaking is yet needed. The lots at Como's and the lots by the library are not busy during the day. And this is the peak use time for these office buildings, who have a different consumer than the shops and the retailers and the restaurants. And those interests, I don't think, have quite yet been met, um, by the plan proposed. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, my name is George Aaron Asaji. I've been here since 1999. I did approach the previous management. You have to have a structure for growth. Now, you did impose on us on all Ferndale new development. Thank you, Brian, to put the light on empty building. But he did not make the decision. He had 600 seats, there's a 300 car. Where do you want to put them? You open Buffalo Wild Wings, that's 400 seats, that's 200 cars. Where do you want to put them? I bring 500, 700 people a week, where do you want to put them? So you did not plan exactly. And DDA, they are not friendly, I didn't know nothing about the shovel. I was walking the street one day, I saw the lady at the wickel, she said, I said, "Yeah, I have no problem." Why they closed the door on us? We pay the taxes. We pay money for their salary and benefit. We struggle to make our own benefit and own salary. We're still surviving. I did lighting, I spent 1,500 dollars to put the lighting in the building. Did she came, say, "Thank you, is it beautiful?" No, if you want me, come see me. This city doesn't work together. You are bunch of everybody ego, no coordination, no mutual, no one walks the street. How are you, how you doing, what you think we have to do? It's a small community, we are a friend there. We don't care about Birmingham, we are a friend there. We hold our own businesses, Asaji, better than any other places in Birmingham or, or Southfield. Did anybody say, "Cause, thank you"? Did everybody come for lunch? No, none of you guys. We pay taxes here. That structure should be done many years ago, and you should have one payment per month per car. No three level, we are not at the orchestra hall. One parking spot, one price, and 75 cents. I pay people, once I see people, customer takes, say, "Oh, I go feed their meter, because I know their cars." And if some customer take a ticket, I say, "Give it to me, please, I'll go pay it." How much can you do? You have to work together. You have to, the businesses support you, we pay the taxes, we support your taxes, we support the light, we support your TV, we support everything, all the businesses. If you don't, but, if you don't want to be a friend to, to the businesses, then goodbye.
Thank you. Your lights are gorgeous, by the way. Your lights are gorgeous. I love the lights at Asaji.
Uh, Tom Gagne, 360 West Woodland. Uh, you were in my, my wife earlier this morning, or this, this evening. Uh, I'm the numbers guy, and I want to say a quick thing to Tim. The idea of bringing, uh, you know, architects, lawyers, software people, accounts, we love all those people, but you mentioned mortgage bankers? I don't know, that's like, I don't think it's a, it's a good idea. No one's like those people these days. Anyway, what I'd like to recommend to city council, basically, is this, we just take a little more time on this. I think the DDA has put some excellent suggestions up, it's gotten a lot of response. They mentioned they talked to some folks, Jackie walked around. Uh, I know Tiff and I walked around on Saturday, and, uh, we also spoke to different people than Jackie did or the DDA has, because we had heard unanimous, "You must be kidding" when they looked at these parking things. Now granted, the numbers have changed since what was published earlier in the week, they changed today, and, um, perhaps they may change next week and whatnot. But this is a good airing out of the ideas. I think, um, getting them out more, getting some more input might be valuable. Making a decision tonight on these things, um, I think is, is hasty and is rushing. Yes, parking is a crisis. No, parking might be important, but it's not a crisis, there isn't a health issue going on right now. Um, there's no life and death situation here. It's, we have all called too many things a crisis. And as a result, our government is always in crisis mode for things that they could have been planning ahead for, or they're, um, they rush in to act where calmer, cooler heads may have come up with better ideas. And so I just like, like the council to know that I don't believe it's a crisis. Take your time, go through all the right procedures. You did that with so many other issues. I encourage you to take your time and trench out these issues tonight. Thank you.
All right, let me just share that there could be some interest at the table, I suspect, on perhaps tabling this item and maybe the next item, but we won't know that until, until we have... tabling this item and maybe the next item, but we won't know that until we have some more discussion up here at the table. But we do have a motion for purposes of discussion, which was to change the boundaries and to create the two levels of parking, the regular and the discount. But I just want to share that I would agree with the idea of tabling this item and the next item, which is the changing of the fee structure. Just for some further tweaking and some further discussion, I really like the idea of a daytime level, weekday level, because I go to lunch every single day in downtown Ferndale, and I never have any trouble parking. So, there really is not a shortage in the day during the week, and I eat in all the restaurants. Obviously, not enough at Asagi, so I'll go there next, but all the other restaurants. And there's truly not a parking shortage during the weekdays. It's at night and on the weekends. Other council members want to share their thoughts or opinions on this motion or issue?
We've been talking about this and tweaking it and kind of moving the pieces around, particularly when it comes to where passes would be located. The pricing structure, I've not been involved in. That's been Christina's research with the city team. But like I said, I was initially concerned about whether downtown residents would park. I think that Mike has raised another great question for refinement about accessibility, whether it's adding more spaces or some other type of pass that allows you to park in a space close to your office. As our community continues to get older, we're going to continue to have these types of challenges of adding larger spaces and more handicap spaces. Because we've been moving these pieces around, although I understand that there is a desire to get everything done on January 1st, and I would hope that we do it as soon as possible, I think I would like to see just one more pass at this to incorporate the questions about residential parking, about handicap spaces. And then, you know, Mayor, if you want to see something about daytime parking...
Consider that issue. So, you're open to the concept of tabling?
I don't know if we just vote it down with direction to incorporate those things or whether we table it. That would be procedural.
It would be procedural.
Well, just as the current motion stands, I would have to vote it down because there is no tweaking of the... My two examples, Lux Lot and the library lot. So, it would probably be who was to table it, I would think. And maybe Christina can work with the chief to find out how many handicap spots can be increased in those lots. I know if my memory serves me correct, you have to have one for every 10 spots, so maybe we increase a few there, especially for the law firm and for Como's. And I'm in favor of tabling both and maybe come in and a day shift pass.
Councilman Galloway?
Yeah, I mean, perhaps some more discussion is warranted, but I had a question for the parking committee of the DDA. How many people are on the parking committee? Who's that comprised of?
Six or seven? Twelve?
There's 12 people on there? They're all from the downtown area? Variety of folks? 12 people attended every meeting?
Probably not every meeting.
But a lot of input?
The majority of meetings.
I would say there were a solid seven people.
You should speak at the microphone. I'm sorry, Mrs. Shepherd.
Sorry. But we've been meeting over the last month and a half, two months, and we had been meeting just about every week to tackle the shuttle system at the beginning, and then we started working on some of the bigger issues. But there, you know, obviously, there's two of them here. Brian Kramer is another one. Amy Ruhl. Steve Salvagio is here, obviously, too. So, there's a good mix of people on the committee, but, you know, the more minds, the better. So, if someone's really interested in coming, let us know, and we'll get you on the email loop so you can come to the meetings. The other thing that Steve brought up, and it was something that I had discussed with him earlier, because I had some business owners who called me personally, and I do think that if there's also a way that we can set up systematically some sort of payment plan process, and I think that would have to be some sort of debit-type system, I think that would be ideal. I think that would be ideal overall anyways. I don't know if we're technologically there, but I would really hope that we would look into doing something like that, and I'd hope that council would be supportive of doing that.
And Christina, you know, from time to time, different issues come up with the DDA. They create a bit of a firestorm. How do you communicate with all the businesses? Is there email, you know, blast that goes out every Monday? Do you have printed newsletters? I mean, how do you...
We do. We send out twice monthly e-blast, and that goes out to businesses and consumers, as well as with, I mean, with this latest thing, we're all knocking on doors. So, members of the committee, we're all knocking on doors, talking to people. So, and granted, there might not have been... We might not have gotten to everybody. There are 400 businesses overall in the downtown area. So, in the area of the public parking area, there's a little over 200 businesses. So, you know, in the amount of time that we've been working, we've been doing the best we possibly can, but I think there's definitely more that we can do.
But do the email blasts, I mean, speak about parking committee meetings and, you know, different...
Shuttle system, yes.
...work groups and all that kind of stuff?
It does. And always asking for volunteers, too. Always.
Is it on your website?
It is on our website.
So, concern people who have businesses in the DDA, if they monitor the website and their emails, would have information about these meetings?
Yeah, because the easiest spot for us to put up a mass quantity of information is our website, because we can upload additional information, PDFs and so forth, as to sending them out through email, which, you know, can sometimes hit or miss, not get to you.
Is the parking, the slideshow that you did tonight or head ready, is that on the website?
The one that we originally sent to you, that one's on the website. We just finished that presentation that you saw tonight, though, just, you know, a short while ago. So, we'll get that one back up, that new one up, for everyone to take a look at.
And what was the... What's the difference between the two? Just the difference between the two presentations?
Oh, the two presentations, it really, in terms of the passes, going into a little bit more detail on the passes and showing the comparison, because from last Monday night's meeting with council, that was one of the questions, is, you know, what are other communities charging? So, we wanted to be able to answer that question and show that comparison. That's the only reason why Royal Oak and Birmingham are on there, so.
I just want to speak for a second about our meetings, our parking committee meetings. The first month and a half of our parking committee meetings was really 100% focused on trying to create the shuttle system. And so, we, you know, I was going to round to different stores and talking to them about it. We all went to different restaurants, and that's where our focus was, besides, I'm not sure what went out in the e-blast. I don't read them all, which... Confession time. So, but that was really the focus, and I wanted to clarify that. The rest of this stuff came about when the DDA Parking Committee really came together with the City Parking Committee, because we were working a separate silos for a little while. And then, when all the pieces came together, there was a few things that we talked about, but the focus was on shuttles and the potential of increasing the parking tickets. So, a lot of this stuff, like you said, it came about fast, and this is a culmination of a lot of ideas that we've talked about, and I am just really excited that there are so many more ideas coming to the table. I'm loving this because it's opening up a door for a brand-new way of thinking about this, because we have been beating our heads up against the wall. So, thank you all for coming here with your ideas. I can't wait to see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Chess, and my comment is, are all of the parking questions and concerns only those that are directed to the DDA? Does the city take any responsibility for answering these questions and taking on this responsibility? And to say that the parking is not a crisis right now, we've known for many years that parking is at a premium here, especially on Fridays and Saturdays or special event nights. So, it is something that we continually brush off and don't address, and now we have the urgency to seek resolution. But the only way we can do that is by volunteers that show up to meetings with ideas, not with complaints, not with judgmental statements, but with ideas on how to move forward. With only having three or four people making decisions or coming up with ideas for something that affects so many thousands of people is very irresponsible of the city council to just let that rest on the shoulders of the DDA. And I would ask that all of you somehow or another create these ideas, these questions, these resolutions, and bring them to our meetings so all of this does not rest on our shoulders. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the table. There has been some discussion of possibly voting it down. I know that we're going to be here all night, so unless you want to speak to the motion, would you like to speak to the motion? Which motion? The one that's on the table. That is the...
To adjust the boundaries.
Is there any discussion on table motion? Is there?
It's not debatable.
Well, we don't have a table motion, I don't think. But no? Oh, it's not a motion table yet? All right. This will be the... We'll ask for one more comment, and the motion was to adjust the boundaries of the parking permit areas and to create the two levels.
Yes. My name is Rich Long, and I live at 262 West Troy. I'm a resident, but I'm kind of like in with the business people because I'm right in the middle of the zone, whether it's single, premium, concentric, whatever you're calling it. I live right on the block. I'm often the eyes and ears. When something's happening on the block, I often am one of the first people calling the non-emergency police number. My point is that you're overlooking a group of people who live on that block, and that's residents of 262 West Troy. We've... We live in a building that was built in 1917, and I looked it up in the Historical Society, and horse and carriage was used, not automobile. So, we don't have our own parking lot. We rely on the Big Troy Lot, as you call it in the report. I'd like you to consider the 12 to 20 people who are in that building, who, it's an incredible hardship. I heard that... I heard about the handicap hardship. I understand that, the challenge to lawyers and other professionals. It really is a challenge. I flew in from DC a week ago, and I had to walk from, actually, I parked over by the post office, and I walked down to Troy and Allen with a Pullman, a duffel bag, and a backpack. It's going to get colder. You know, I have bags all the time that I'm trying to bring. It's a hardship. I'm speaking about the zoning now. What's the name of this? Cara Shell or...
Parking, yes.
Yeah. That's too far. I would love to see me be able to keep my ability to park in Big Troy. I have a problem with paying more and getting less. If I'm going to pay more, then let me park in Big Troy, where I've been parking for nine years since I've been living in that building. I choose to rent. I could have bought a house a long time ago. I love the renting and being able to walk in Ferndale. But please consider us. Don't forget about us. We're residents. I've heard people say we want, you know, input from residents. I'm a resident, and I'm on the block. Don't forget about us, please.
Very good. Parking committee heard that. Right? All right. There is a motion on the table. Are we ready for a... Madam Clerk?
Ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want me to reread the motion?
Not necessarily, unless anyone needs it rewritten.
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
I wouldn't know if Scott read it off the sheet or what he was reading.
Motion by Galloway, seconded by Baker, to adjust the boundaries of the prepaid parking permit areas pursuant to the City Code Section 18-87 as follows. Discount prepaid parking permit areas shall include the City Hall Lot, West Breckenridge Lot, and Withington Street. Standard prepaid parking permit areas shall include the East Breckenridge, Fawlby Lot, Shield Cara Lot, and Withington Lot, certain sections beach. And the prepaid parking permits shall not be allowed in the Big Troy Lot, Library Lot, Lux Lot, Planavon Lot, Police Lot, or the old Rosio Grady's Lot.
Thank you.
Ready to vote? Thanks.
Thanks.
Councilmembers Galloway?
No.
Gumbelton?
No.
Lennon?
No.
Baker?
No.
Mayor Covy?
No. That motion was defeated. Is there consensus that we're still interested in the issue and would like the parking committees and staff to work it some more, make some changes, and bring it back?
Yeah, all right.
Or do you want a formal vote to table and bring back?
I think it's in formal direction.
I can make a motion if you'd like.
That's what I was asking.
I'm going to move that we table... No, they're not numbered, so. The section regarding prepaid parking permit areas and the section regarding increased prepaid parking permit fees, we table indefinitely until DDA comes back to us in their timeline with something more definite and addressing handicapped and the fees and other various individuals and businesses that might live down there that might need some tweaking.
Along with some council and staff people.
Well, sure. We'll all work out it together.
Is there a second to that motion?
Support.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gumbelton, seconding Councilman Lennon's motion to table indefinitely to come back at some point after it's been worked on and tweaked. Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Gumbelton?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Covy?
Yes, that passes unanimously. The next item is to increase meter parking fees, and that was discussed earlier, to increase the price of metered parking as follows. A dollar an hour on the street to 75 cents an hour in all the lots here that are listed. So, that is a change from the current fees.
I have a request for...
There is... There's nothing in this motion about meters, changing to electric meters or big boards.
That wasn't... I was going to say, that wasn't part of any of our recommendations for this evening because we're not there yet. I think that there's a lot more time framing that we need to do, so I think that will come sometime in the next three months to council, but it's not going to be in the next two weeks.
I'll take the blame for that. Are you suggesting that that item might be tabled as well?
You can table it, or that's really something that we didn't propose for tonight. It was just more for information purposes. Sorry.
Then, there's no necessary or requested action? Correct. Very good. We're moving on to the next issue. Thank you, members of the audience. Madam Clerk, next item.
We have council liaison reports, if any.
Mr. Brunner, let's start with you.
Nothing for me tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. Any council members have any updates on the... On those organizations that are listed there?
I have two.
Please, Councilwoman Baker, I would ask the audience members to wait till they get outside before they talk. Thank you.
The first is regarding something that the mayor and I have been involved with, is a program of the Michigan Suburbs Alliance called the Millennial Mayor's Congress, and we had a, but I think it was a great meeting on Saturday, an all-day meeting at the new Michigan State Satellite Office on Woodward, right down the street from Wayne State. So, that should make Wayne State shake in its boots a little bit. It's a really nice facility and a historic building. We discussed what I think are some pretty progressive collaborative guidelines for lowering city energy use throughout the region, as well as setting some goals for lowering energy use of not... From non-municipal sources throughout the region. We had buy-in from cities, large and small. I was sitting next to people from Warren, Hamtramck, and East Point. I mean, so we've got people from a variety of city sizes as well throughout the region. I believe that there are 21 different municipalities represented in the Millennial Mayor's Congress. So, we should, in the next four to six months, have some resolutions before this council talking about energy usage goals. I think, actually, Ferndale might already have made some of the numbers that they're recommending other cities hit, but I think that one of the next things we'll be pursuing has to do with land use. So, I'm particularly interested in ways that we, as a region, can work with our neighboring cities to market our underused sites and to encourage redevelopment. The other is sort of tangentially related to Transportation Riders United. I was at the Oakland County Commission meeting last week, which that week flew, and there will be... Keep your eyes open. There's some action happening on the regional transit... transit millage. It will be up for a vote sooner rather than later, so important to encourage both our residents and residents in neighboring communities who may be tempted to opt out of that transit millage, to continue to support transit in our region, to—my—I spoke in particular on the need to make transit a priority to help keep young professionals in our region. Let's not keep, you know, keep telling people that they need to go to Chicago, or New York, or Washington to have an urban experience, that they can have it right here in Detroit and in Metro Detroit. So just to keep on your radar from a Transportation Riders United perspective.
An urban experience.
Absolutely.
I love that phrase. And they don't have to purchase a premium parking pass.
Don't you know it?
They could take the train, or the bus, or whatever it is.
Absolutely.
Any other issues or comments on the liaison organizations? How about Councilwoman-elect Piana? Anything to share on the Suburbs Alliance?
None, just thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item. Call to council?
Thank you. We're at— Call to council.
All right. Mr. Fotites, anything from the Department of Public Works, sir?
Uh, no, Your Honor.
Thank you kindly. Chief Kitchen, Police Department?
Mary Christmas, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Chief Roger Schmidt from the Ferndale Fire Department?
Same son, I have a joyous and fire safety.
Any fire tips for the people out there?
If you stop by the fires, both fire stations have a nice little tip sheet available for you. It's got the whole list of tips.
May I ask her about the Goodfellows? How did that go?
Paper sale was very successful, raised over $3,000. Police Department won.
Does that include the $3,321.48 that Larry and Monica Mills raised during the prohibition?
No, and Larry Mills was claiming that he had written paper sales, but justified his goal.
So I think he wanted that to go towards the fire department's amount, so Chief— Unless you raised more than $6,000, I think the fire department might have won this year. Who else? Yes, sir.
Your Honor, excuse me. I did forget to mention that with winter coming, we're asking the residents to abide by the snow emergency when we do declare it, four or more inches of snow at any 24-hour period. If you don't have a driveway or access to your property, you can certainly come down to the DPW, or if you're handicapped, and get a—get a permit from us, which you can put on your car, which will allow you to park on the street, but we ask you to park as close to the curb as possible. But it—it does help us when we do declare a snow emergency. You can hear it on radio, it'll be on the city's website, and it'll be on TV, as it is with some of these other cities nearby, to get your vehicles off the street. We usually get three or four of those storms, and it—it certainly helps us get the job done a lot quicker.
Byron, I've got a question for the— for you, and maybe this is for the police chief as well. If there is a snow emergency, how is parking, you know, in your driveway in such a way that it blocks the sidewalk treated, or parking up on your grass in some way to allow this— are you going to be ticketed for that?
Well, I—I certainly don't—we don't look for that in the DPW. I think everybody understands that when you get your car off the street, you've got to get your car off the street, and that means that you're in the approach and you're blocking the sidewalk, even though maybe you leave a little way. We all understand that. We're trying to get through. But what we have in Ferndale is that sometimes people just don't want to jockey their cars. They have enough room, they just don't want to jockey them. And that's unfortunate, because it just creates a problem for us, and with budgets getting even tighter, we don't have the luxury of going back out a second and a third time to plow the streets. We're one of the very few communities that goes back a second and a third time to do what we should have done the first time, and with budgets being tight, and that may not be a possibility. And so you'll have to live with snowdrifts until we can get to the street again, maybe the next storm. And if you get a cold winter, then you've got banked snow that once froze a car that sits there, which causes a hazard in the street itself.
Thanks, Byron. Mike, anything you wanted to add? Mike, were you good on that?
No. We're—we do our best to notify people, and we appreciate compliance as well. We have a lot more stuff to do than chase after that kind of thing.
Thank you. Councilwoman-elect Piana, you didn't have anything to share, but we do want you to stay for the closed meeting that's coming up. Does any member of council have an objection to our having Councilwoman-elect Piana attend that meeting?
No.
Is there a requirement for any kind of a vote? Mr. Criss, we're all good?
As long as council—anyone who assists council in their deliberations, council's prerogative.
Very good. Mr. Brunner, anything to share?
Just to wish happy holidays to everyone. Shop local. Dan Martin mentioned buying Taste of Ferndale tickets is a great gift. We're buying bee nectar mead for a lot of our friends and family this year, so think Ferndale first.
Very good. Cheryl Lynn Tomlin, City Clerk?
The Library Board asked me to announce that they have a vacancy. Kevin Deegan Kraus has resigned effective December 10th, so the Library Board is taking letters of interest. They should be addressed to the Ferndale Library Board, can be sent via email to—I won't give you the email address, you can look it up on the internet, or you can mail it to or drop it off at the library's temporary facility at 642 East Nine Mile. Deadline is January 15th.
Thank you. Mr. Criss?
Very briefly, Your Honor. I just—council and Your Honor should have received the notice that the Oakland County Circuit Court Judge Langford Morris did issue her opinion in order affirming the board's zoning appeals, the decision with respect to the First Baptist Church matter, last week. So that matter should be concluded. There is a time period for the appellant's to seek a further review, and that time period is running right now.
Very good, sir. Councilwoman Gumbelton, anything to share?
Just want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and we'll see you after Christmas.
Very good. Councilwoman Baker?
In addition to shopping Ferndale, I work in—in midtown Detroit, and my—my colleagues and friends and I have really been trying to—to shop Detroit as well. And the now fourth annual Shop Detroit event this past weekend, which I didn't get to participate in because I was at the Millennial Mayor's Congress, was a huge success, from what I understand. And we are actually, as an office at the Wayne State Press, for our holiday party, we are taking a few hours in the afternoon to—to shop Detroit. We are specifically shopping at our—our midtown stores, supporting the businesses that support us. So I would just encourage, you know, local residents to think about that for their office. It's—it's a way to familiarize yourself with your—your local area, be it here in Ferndale, or—in Detroit, or—Royal Oak, or Birmingham, as well as shopping locally. I've been shopping locally, and I need to thank Dina Caccadorian, because I think she's watching. She said she wanted to see her necklace on television tonight, so my Nancy Pelosi pearls are courtesy of wonderful Ferndale artist, Dina Caccadorian. And that's it. Happy holidays.
Very good. Councilman?
Well, wish everybody very safe and happy and Merry Christmas, first and foremost. And on Saturday—last Saturday, December 5th, I attended a party at the American Legion, their last day. They closed their doors. That ends an era and a chapter of Ferndale history. You know, they've been really community-oriented for several years, and Mr. Flores is going to provide me with some information, which I will sit down with Cheryl Lynn, and we'll have a resolution. Hopefully, we can get it together by the next meeting and read it and present it to them. They've been instrumental in this community for—
Sure.
—as long as I can remember.
Absolutely.
And that's all I got, Mayor.
Very good. Councilman Galloway?
Nothing this evening. A short agenda turns into a long meeting, as usual, but I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, hope folks are enjoying Hanukkah, and enjoy Kwanzaa.
Absolutely. Real quick, again, thanks to Larry and Monica Mills, who raised over $3,000 for the Ferndale Goodfellows, and those of the police and fire, who then go out and help families and children who are in risk of not having a Christmas and buys food and presents. Real quick, let me list the volunteers, because this is what makes Ferndale cool, is people helping other people. Bud Easton, Ann Hubberth, Bonnie Miller, Robyn Starenko, Julie Anderson, Becky and Ron Babino, Gene Cavanagh, Gene Davis, Tiffany and Tom Gagne, Tommy and Don Howard, Cheryl and Steve Kuzmanovich, Dan Martin, Larry and Monica Mills, Mary O'Brien, Greg Palica, Kerry Watkins, and the Ferndale firefighters. Good job for them. The last thing I wanted to mention, a lot of folks are all happy and excited, because Michigan finally joined 37 other states in banning smoking in all workplaces. That includes restaurants and bars. My only complaint is that Michigan decided to include outdoor areas, including patios of the bars, and so I'm going to attempt to write some sort of a possible amendment, or at least a request for consideration, that our legislature consider allowing smoking on the patios or the outdoor areas of the bars and restaurants. I do worry about the businesses suffering, some of them. But for most folks, it's a good thing, no smoking in the businesses and in all restaurants and in all bars beginning on May 1st. We do have a closed session, but we will take a break for five minutes. This regular—
We need a motion.
—council meeting, we will close. We need a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session for the purpose of strategy and negotiation, connected with the negotiation of the collected—collective parking agreement as permitted by Section 8C of the Open Meetings Act of 1976.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Vote, Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.